Hey, Johnny Ballgame here. What's going on? You're not gonna hire a basketball coach to-
Welcome to the La Grande City Council Forum. Brought to you by EO Alive from Brent Clapp Productions Studios in downtown La Grande. This event is sponsored by Grand Ron Hospital, EO and I, True Value Hardware, and Brother Bear Cafe. The candidates for the city council election are Alex McAdet and incumbent Steve Clemens for mayor, Denise Wheeler and incumbent Nicole Howard for position two, David Glab and incumbent Corinne Dudo for position three, Christine Alfryppy and incumbent Mary Ann Meesner for position four, and finally, John Bozarth, who will not be appearing tonight, and David Moyle. Tonight's event is hosted by Brent Clapp and Bob Kavanaugh.
Your questions anytime to the candidates during the broadcast or via Facebook comments at office@eoalive.tv. And we'll include your questions later on in the program. Also, we're encouraging the candidates to go back after the forum and address the questions that you have asked in Facebook to them specifically. Please reference the candidate as you are addressing them in the comment.
Thank you, Brent, and welcome. Good evening. Hello, my name is Bob Kavanaugh, and it's an honor to meet with you tonight, and thank you for taking time to tune in. As Brent had mentioned, we want to reiterate, the purpose of the forum tonight is to give you the opportunity to get to know your candidates. We're not trying to do a deep dive into what each candidate thinks about every issue or subject. There just isn't time for that, but we do want you to meet some folks who might be new to you and also reintroduce you to those who have been serving you already, our incumbents. We've asked the candidates to talk about themselves and what they want to do to make our city, the city of La Grande, even better. Our hope is that the candidates will engage and connect with you, our viewers, the citizens of La Grande, and give us a glimpse into who they are and the leaders they hope to be.
There are a couple of things that we want to remind you about as you watch the forum tonight. The city council serves at the will of the La Grande citizens. They are volunteers. Yes, they do receive a small stipend, many of which give back to the general fund, but there is no salary that can make up for the amount of time they spend working on behalf of the city. Also, these are nonpartisan seats, meaning the candidates do not associate themselves with any political party for these positions. Again, their main concern and priority is you, the people who call La Grande your home.
Okay, so, get ready. Here we go. There are seven city council positions total. Now, this year, there are four seats whose four-year terms are up, including the mayor's position, and one seat that was vacated by our friend Jim Whitbeck, who had two years left to fill, to serve. Therefore, you, the citizens of La Grande, will be voting for five different positions, including the mayor's position.
So here's the rundown and positions for tonight's candidates. Running for mayor is the incumbent Steve Clemens and Alex McAdet. Thank you, guys. Position number two is incumbent Nicole Howard versus Denise Wheeler. Thank you, guys, for joining us. Number three is incumbent Corinne Dudo versus David Glab. Hey, thank you, guys, for jumping in. Number four is incumbent Mary Ann Meesner versus Kristin Alfryppy. Hey, thank you, guys.
Fantastic. And for city council position six, which has, again, two years left of a four-year term, is John Bozarth versus David Moyle. Thank you. Unfortunately, John could not join us this evening, so let's continue. Please note, there is something you need to know about the mayoral position. It has no more power than any other city council member. It is still a powerful position, but in essence, the mayor's vote is equal to any other city council member. Now, with this in mind, the mayoral position is expected to be a leader in the community, and we thank that position for all that they do for our town.
So to keep us organized and on track tonight for tonight's forum, there are three different parts. Part one, we will be the opening statements of each of the candidates. Part three will be a series of questions based on public feedback that we have received. Now, there's not enough time for each candidate to respond to each question. So random groups of three candidates will answer one of the three questions. The candidates did receive these questions ahead of time.
Correct. Now, that was part two. So then, part three, the candidates will be answering questions that you, our viewers, submit in the comments section on Facebook or that you email us, and we'll follow the previous questions format. Now, we ask that all questions that you might want to consider that they be generally focused to all the candidates and not directed to any one candidate in particular. Now, we are looking for local, relevant questions that apply to all the candidates. One of the most important things to remember is that the city council members are an integral part of our community. They are local citizens who have decided to give their time and leadership to serve the citizens of our beautiful city. And on behalf of all of us, we want to thank our candidates for being here tonight. Okay, and with this said, we're going to pause for a commercial break. Stay tuned. We'll be right back in about 30 seconds for your candidates' opening statements.
Welcome back to the La Grande City Council Forum. Now, let's get started with the candidates' opening statements. Each candidate will have two and a half minutes to tell us about themselves and why they are running for the La Grande City Council. And the order that we've chosen is random. So first up is, and they don't know the order that they're gonna be in. So first up is David Moyle. This is your time to give us your opening statement.
All right. Thank you so much. I want to thank Brent and Bob for organizing and moderating this forum. I've lived in La Grande for nearly 11 years. When I moved here, in a real deep sense, I found my home. Before that, I lived in the San Francisco Bay Area, where I worked as a physician assistant in an inner-city emergency room. My career in healthcare took me overseas to Nepal, where I volunteered for six months in the Lutheran Church-sponsored clinic. I finished my medical career here in La Grande, working at the vets clinic over on 12th Street. So my entire professional life has involved helping people in need, and the idea of service is deeply ingrained in me. When I retired, I started sitting on the La Grande City Budget Committee, where I served for four years. That gave me significant insight into how the city's finances work and of the challenges involved in making and meeting a complex budget. This year, I shifted over to Parks and Rec, which fits my longstanding interest in youth programming. In fact, when library and pool services were threatened, with cuts six years ago, I co-organized La Grande Kids, which led to an outpouring of community support and took the cuts off the table. My run for position six is simply a continuation of this longstanding desire to be of service to the community I live in. As a citizen and as a future council member, my areas of interest include, in no particular order, housing, recreation, opportunities particularly for youth, economic growth, and health. I hope I have the opportunity tonight to get into some of the details of my thoughts in these and other areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Next up is Mary Ann Meesner, and you have two and a half minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you, Brent and Bob, sorry, for hosting this forum. Our family moved to La Grande in 1975. My husband was being transferred for his job with UPS, and he had a choice of where we wanted to relocate. There was the choice of Roseburg, Hermiston, Boise, or La Grande. I can still remember driving in the west entry of La Grande and saying, "This is the place", and we have never regretted it. Our oldest son was in the second grade, and I soon became involved with Central's PTA. That led me to volunteering for the La Grande's Budget Committee, which led to the 19 years on the school board. And then I decided to further my volunteer service by going into the city council back in 2013, excuse me, 2003, until 2015. I did take a couple of years off, which during that time I volunteered in the City Planning Commission and the URA Advisory Commission. I missed being on the council and decided to run again in 2016. My goals for La Grande are simple. I want to pursue keeping a small-town vibe while still expanding the shopping opportunities, increasing job potential for our residents, encouraging our youth to remain here and seek employment, making our housing market affordable for everyone, and decreasing our homeless population. I know that sounds like a perfect town. However, I think we can accomplish most of it through making educated decisions and hard work. I would also like to see our downtown streetscape be completed to at least Greenwood, if not Island Avenue, finally making it a cohesive downtown area. Through all of this, though, we must keep an eye on the budget and be fiscally responsible. We also need to continually review our city policies and procedures to make sure that we are treating all of our businesses and citizens fairly and equally. I really love this community and want the best for our businesses and residents. Being on the city council allows me to have a voice in decisions that will affect the future of our community. My decisions are based on knowledge of past successes, opinions, and desires of the people who talk to me, information presented by city staff, and data researched from other communities within the state or other states. However, new information presented at meetings are always taken into consideration. Being a city councilor, you must keep an open mind and not make a rash decision. These are the reasons I am seeking reelection to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Yeah. And I didn't mention, but Mary Ann is an incumbent. And so next is Nicole Howard, who is also an incumbent. Thank you, Nicole, and we want to hear from you.
Thanks, Bob. I am Nicole Howard. I'm running for reelection to the council to serve a second term. I ran for council four years ago for pretty specific reasons. I'd served on the planning commission, and I learned about the laws and ordinances around city planning issues. It was the first time I'd really looked under the hood of city government and realized that there's a lot more going on there than I knew. Around that time, I also watched a pretty contentious round of budget discussions and saw that the library and the pool were at risk of losing funding. So I started paying attention to the budget process and learning about that. And I think, like a lot of people, I wondered why certain things got funded, other things didn't, why one project takes off and another stalls. And so digging into the budget process helped answer some of those questions. My day job is as a history professor at Eastern, and like a lot of teachers, I enjoy learning. My first two years on the council was like drinking from a fire hose. What I knew about the budget and the planning commission was nothing compared to getting a handle on the city as a whole. Even in a small town like ours, it's a remarkably complex set of systems. And now that I feel like I'm finally getting it, I really want to continue my work for the citizens of La Grande. I'd be grateful for a chance to build on what I've learned and move into a second term with some new ideas. And that leads me to my second reason for running is because I have some specific things that I really want to address. I'll talk about some of them throughout the night, but one is bringing some attention to the economic health of our community in the wake of COVID. As a council, we've approved about $170,000 worth of low-interest loans that we took from contingency funds. That's gone to 22 different businesses in our downtown to help them weather this storm. But I think that what's coming in the future is going to be even more challenging, and I believe my experience over the past four years will make me a good person to sit on the council and solve some of these problems. Second thing I'm concerned about that I want to highlight is my concern of wildfire. The fires on the west side this summer were a real stark reminder that we need to be more prepared. So the council's talked in the past with the fire chief and the fire department, I know, is as prepared as they can be for a major fire event. But I think now's the time for the city to take the lead on developing a more comprehensive plan and logistics. So I'll talk about some of my other ideas as we go, but I appreciate the forum, Brent, and thank everyone for their time tonight.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
And just a note, I think when David started his opening comments, I don't think we quite had our timer right. And so, David, sorry about interrupting you. I'm glad you pushed on. So next is Denise Wheeler. Denise Wheeler, thanks for joining us tonight.
You bet, and thank you so much again for doing this forum. It's really hard to kind of talk about myself. My husband kind of encouraged me, so here it goes, okay? I was born and raised in California. I'm the first generation of a legal immigrant. My mom came over during the Second World War, and she taught me about how great this country is. And it was a joy for her to learn English and also become a citizen of the United States. And also, she taught me the love of this nation and the freedom which it has that she did not have in her other country of France. She taught me the love of the National Anthem, the Pledge of Allegiance. And I have, she taught me a great love of the United States. Also, one thing that really assured my love for the freedoms which we have here in the States is that I lived outside of the country for a length of time, serving a mission for my church. And it made me really realize how blessed we truly are. We moved here in La Grande in 2002. We came with two daughters in high school, one at EOU, and it happened to be the best move we've ever made. And since we've been here, I've worked with children, youth, and women organizations inside the church, and also in the community itself. I was one of the instigators of the Elgin Opera House. I was, had the pleasure of directing the first shows out there and had the pleasure of doing that. I've worked at EOU. I've also direct and costume and choreographed the musical theater productions at La Grande High School. Currently during the day right now, I am a lifetime enrichment assistant at Grand Ron Retirement, and that has brought me great, great joys. Some of the issues that I would like to address is the importance of transparency. I know there's a debate about that, but I really feel strongly that the people of La Grande need to know what the council is discussing and voting upon and so forth. Like, see, my time is almost gone. And other things I like is road improvement, housing development in this area. And we've got to make this La Grande a destination place to come because it's worth it.
Awesome. Thank you, Denise.
Thank you, thank you.
Sure, appreciate it. Okay, so our next person is going to share with us is Alex McCaddick. Thanks, Alex. Tell us about yourself.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Alex McCaddick. It's a pleasure to be here speaking with all of you. I'm running for mayor of La Grande because I believe that there are some key issues we need to focus on that my background empowers me to address. By day, I am the manager of a local government agency that operates all the television towers in the region. I'm very familiar with all the details of public administration, including writing entire government budgets for a living, as well as working with a council manager system as the manager of a council manager government agency. I also regularly travel to Salem to fight for funding and bills that benefit Eastern Oregon, my crowning achievement there, passing historic telecommunications legislation with unanimous support of the state legislature and the governor, and that was without even being a voting member of the legislature. So if I'm elected one of the seven members of the Grand City Council, I'll have an even better chance at passing policies. Now, some of the things that I think the city needs to focus on in the next couple of years, first off is transparency. For most of the last two years, city council and commission meeting materials were not posted online prior to public meetings, and that prevented public discourse from being informed. I also want to make sure that that lapse in transparency never happens again. I want to start broadcasting and streaming all meetings of our unelected city commissions, a process that can be funded by non-commercial sponsorship from the private sector, which is pretty ubiquitous throughout the United States. I also want to repeal or amend the city's snow plowing policy that arbitrarily prevents snow plowing until six inches of snow has fallen. One of the ways I think we can help fund that is by eliminating the franchise fee on water and sewer and sending Public Works money back to it, rather than siphoning it off in the general fund so that we can get the roads plowed more regularly. I have also been endorsed by Representative Greg Bredow, Elgin Mayor Alan Duffy, as well as former Councilman John Bozarth. When I appear on your ballot this fall, I hope that you'll take a look at my resume, my ideas, and the people who have put their confidence in me as the next leader of La Grande and cast your vote for me. Thank you very much for listening, and I really look forward to answering your questions tonight.
Thank you, Alex. Next, we have David Glave.
Amy?
Yep, there you go.
My name's David Glave. My wife Erin and I moved here with our family about seven years ago. We've got five children, two of whom were born here at Grand Ron Hospital. By profession, I'm a doctor of optometry, and I'm part owner of La Grande Family Eye Care, which is a small clinic. We have three doctors and 10 excellent support staff. I decided to run for city council because I believe that I can be a powerful voice for both family-oriented and business-friendly policies here in our city. As beautiful as our community is, we've got some real problems that need some real solutions. That includes a poverty rate that's over 20% and a shortage of family wage, jobs, and affordable housing. Too many of our children go on to graduate and gain new skills, but then they leave our community when they can't find suitable jobs here. And as a father and a small business owner, I'm keenly aware of the impact of city regulations and policies on families and small businesses. And I intend to preserve the family values that make our community a great place to raise children, while simultaneously reducing the regulatory burdens on businesses that make it harder for business owners to contribute to economic growth here. Some things that I want to accomplish as a city councillor include the establishment of a family science center here in La Grande. That would provide family educational opportunities, and it would encourage our children to pursue schooling and careers in areas of high job growth. This can be funded and maintained through federal grants, as well as a partnership with ONZI. I've already started the discussions to make this happen. I've been visiting with Erin Graham, who's the CEO of ONZI. She's excited to work with us here in La Grande. I also want to reevaluate land use in town. I want to break down barriers to new development. I think that the stagnant growth that we've seen in our community over the past decade is evidence that some of the past policies for economic growth leave room for improvement. And I feel that members of our community are ready for some new faces and some new ideas in city leadership. I hope that you'll find in me a candidate worthy of your vote who will represent the values that you and your family hold dear.
We appreciate you being with us tonight. All right, next is the current mayor and incumbent Steve Clements. Thank you, Steve, for jumping in with us tonight.
Thank you, Brent. Good evening, and thank you all for the opportunity to speak tonight. As you know, my name is Steve Clements. I've lived in La Grande for slightly over 30 years. For the last six years, I've been the mayor. And before I was the mayor, I served in the city council for 12 years, four of those as the mayor pro temp. During my time on the council over all that 16, 18 years, I played a part in deciding the following city projects: remodeling the veterans' pool, siting and building the fire station, creating the urban renewal district, building the library and business park, reworking the Gekler and 12th Street roadways, and more recently, establishing the railroad quiet zone. In all these decisions, I have looked for what is best for La Grande, not only at the time of the decision, but for the future. I'm running for mayor because of my desire to serve and to give back to a community that has given me so much. I've worked professionally in La Grande for more than 25 years. I raised a family, and I get to live in the place that I love. I'm running also to bring experience to the position. As mayor, I have a solid understanding of processes and policies, and I have a leadership style that's open and respectful. I've learned a lot in the last six years as mayor, and I'm really excited about continuing my disservice and doing the best for my community. Now, the issues I'm concerned about include some of the ones you've already heard, but specifically, I'm really concerned about housing availability and security, about economic development outside of the urban renewal district, and maintaining a full-service community. The city has just completed a housing need study, so now it's time to figure out what we can do to fill those needs. Working within the dimension of Oregon's land use laws, we might consider what local codes may need to be changed to encourage more housing. The urban renewal district has proven to be an effective economic development mechanism within the district, but it is time to consider the area outside the district and what we can do to encourage business investments. We started this process this year when we allocated funds to the city's economic development director to commit more time to the areas throughout the city. And finally, a full-service city provides quality of life and economic development. As expenditures increase, we must be diligent with how taxpayer dollars are used so that all services remain operational and vibrant. I look forward to continuing my role as mayor and to serving you and this community. Thank you.
So next is incumbent Corinne Dudo.
All right.
Brent and Bob, so I am Corinne Dudo, and I'm running for La Grande City Council to ensure that we maintain our quality of life. I began my service for the city in 2007 on the Parks Commission. I volunteered because the council at that time was threatening to close the pool in order to balance the budget. After six years on that commission, I joined the Budget Committee and learned a great deal about how the city budget works, and I learned about budget law. I ran for city council in 2016, and I'm running again today to ensure that we preserve our services that are so essential to our quality of life here in La Grande. City services are essential to a good quality of life. Our parks, our places to play, exercise, compete in athletics, walk our dogs, and socialize. Our pool provides a safe place to exercise, young and old, and year-round. The pool is a place for competition for the swim club, the high school, and Special Olympics. Our library is essential for learning, doing research, applying for jobs, or doing homework. Our library has provided a now essential service of Wi-Fi for citizens who need this service to participate in remote school today. Our police, fire, and EMS are there for us when we have a crisis or an emergency. Our Public Works Department provides us with clean water and ensures that we can safely travel throughout the city by car, by bike, or by foot, or even wheelchair. Our economic development team supports our small businesses so we have jobs and places to buy goods and services. All of these things are essential for quality of life, and it's my priority to ensure that we have these things available in the future. Financing essential services is complicated and requires knowledge of rules, regulations, and budget law. Our citizens are clear that they do not want to pay more in taxes. So we need to work with the current allotment and be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. We need a council that has experience with municipal budgeting to ensure that we are fiscally responsible with tax dollars. I will not make any backdoor deals or favor any particular group. I will not force my morals on the population of the entire city. Rather, I will make decisions based on what I think is best for citizens from all walks of life, not a particular subset of the community. I do my research, look at the data, and listen to citizens before I make any decision. I believe my strengths in the position of city councillor are in being able to objectively look at issues and in my integrity. If you agree with me, then vote for Corinne Dudo on November 3rd. Thanks.
Thank you, Corinne. All right, and lastly is Christine Alf Rippe. Thank you for joining us, Christine.
Thank you, Brent and Bob and EO Alive for hosting this forum tonight. Hi, I'm Christine Alf Rippe, and I'm running for La Grande City Council, position four. I'm a child of a military family and a wife of a park ranger, and I've spent my life bouncing from place to place until falling in love with Eastern Oregon. And we chose to settle in La Grande. We chose La Grande specifically for the quality of life it offers us. From the library to the parks to the pool, to the now blossoming downtown, La Grande has big city services in a small rural community. This is our home, and we've been busy making it our home. I have volunteered for our local Girl Scouts, for Willala Fiddle Camp, and the Folklore Society for the high school, and the swim club, all while homeschooling our four daughters. These experiences and others have taught me about organizational finances, problem-solving, and the important role that smaller volunteer groups play in our community. Now that my daughters are going to the middle school and the high school in Eastern Oregon University, I have the time and energy that I need to dedicate to a more civic role. As one of your city councillors, I will make informed decisions that address the needs of local family, that support our city businesses, and ensure that the services that we rely on continue to be funded. I have a deep commitment to the La Grande community, and I want other families to enjoy this city as much as I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kristin. Now, we're getting Facebook messages. We really appreciate that, getting those questions and comments, and we're going to put those in the hopper when we get ready to choose those questions. Thank you for all of your comments. And then also a reminder.
Powerful comments.
Yeah.
Yes, very powerful comments.
One more time, the email that you can send questions to is office@eoalive.tv if you're wanting to do that. All right, so we'll be right back after a short word from our sponsors.
This is Jimmy B., front end manager here at True Value in La Grande. We are located at 214 Greenwood on the corner of Jefferson and Greenwood. We are locally owned and operated. Community and customer service are the cornerstone of our mission here at True Value. We feature Easy Care Paint, Diablo Saw, and Makita Tools. Our professional, courteous staff are always willing to help. We want to make your job easier, so stop on by. True Value here in La Grande. Behind every project is a true value.
All right, we're back. And thank you again to our candidates. As we were talking during the break, those are some very powerful statements, and I hope that you, the viewer, could really hear the heart behind those opening statements. All right, so we are headed in now to the first question. And this question, all nine candidates will be answering this one specific question. Now, the order is random, and they'll each have one minute to answer the question.
And this is kind of a softball.
This is that warm-up, the icebreaker, if you will, question. And so I hope you'll just indulge us because this should be kind of fun to hear the heart and love behind even more than what they said in their opening statement. So we're going to start with Denise Wheeler. And Denise, the question is, is what do you love most about La Grande, and what do you think La Grande does well?
Oh, wow. Well, like I said before, this was probably the best move that we've ever made. We've lived in many different places. There's something about, like Mary Ann said, when you come into the valley, there's just a calmness, there's a beauty, there's a sense of being and belonging here in this valley. You know, the mountains are right there, you get deer in your yard, and you know, what could be better than that? And plus, this area offers so much in hiking and boating and hunting, and I think that is a good draw for a lot of people. It's also, you know, we have a need to also develop, but as, because the way we're situated, we still will always have that small-town feel, and I think that's what we do right as well.
Fantastic, thank you. Okay, we're going to move along. We're going to go to Alex McCaddick at next. Alex, what do you love most about La Grande, and what do you think La Grande does well? You've got one minute.
You know, I didn't grow up in La Grande, but I came here a few times when I was a kid because I have family here, and I fell in love with it as soon as I first visited. This is one of the most beautiful places in the world I've ever visited. And I've, you know, I've been in America, and I've been in Europe, and this is just great. I love being able to end the day during summer and walk out of my office and be able to spend, you know, five hours, you know, in the wild, just walking around, being myself or being with other people. We have, we're so intimately close to nature, it almost makes me feel a little more human than, you know, when I'm surrounded by steel and concrete in a big city. This is one of the best places in the world to be able to commune with nature and just be in the natural world, and I just love everything about being in this town.
Okay, next, we're going to go to David Glave. David, what do you love most about La Grande, and what do you think La Grande does well?
So my wife and I, in just the years from college, I think we've lived in seven different states. A lot of that was just, you know, clinical training, Colorado Springs, Oklahoma, Kentucky, Utah, throughout the US, Kansas City. Coming here has been a great blessing. Coming here has been a great blessing. We recognize here a place where we can raise our children safely, where we can, we can be around other people with families who care deeply about good moral values. We love the outdoors here. We've lived in some great places with access to the outdoors. Colorado Springs is one of them. But never have we lived in a place where so readily you can go out on a trail and find seclusion. And, you know, we love taking advantage of those opportunities with our family. I love LeGrand because it's a wonderfully safe place to raise my family, where we can be surrounded by nature's beauty and where we can, we can live a very, very high quality of life.
All right, it's like the lightning round. Steve Clements, you're up next. What do you love most about LeGrand and what do you think LeGrand does well? You've got one minute.
One minute to say all of that? Okay, let's see. I got one word, people. I love the people of LeGrand. I love the fact that I can walk down the sidewalks on Main Street or Adams and see people that I know and have a conversation or in Safeway. I love that people will approach me. Yesterday, my neighbor came down to see me and asked me about something that she was dealing with with the city. The people are what made this community. The people are what I love the most. And that's what LeGrand does the best. It brings good people here because of the beauty around us, of the solitude, of the safety, of the diversity of what we have here to offer. We have, we have sort of a really strong city feeling, but we also have this real quick access to the rural. And people will come here in droves when they learn about this place.
Very nice. Thank you, Steve. Excellent points. Okay, Nicole Howard, the incumbent, what do you love most about LeGrand and what do you think LeGrand does well? You've got one minute.
Well, first, because I think that's its most impressive feature. The parks and rec and the library in this city are unmatched. I mean, for a town of this size, what they provide in terms of amenities to this community is what you'd see in a town three to four times the size of ours. We're incredibly lucky to have those two entities in town giving us things. And for me personally, moving here was a great thing because of the, people have mentioned the safety of the town, but it's also walkable. I really like that this is a town that you can access things. I can walk to work, you can walk to downtown. And I think that is in part what gives it the feel that Steve's talking about and others are talking about when they refer to the people. There's an intimacy to LeGrand that I think is really unique and special. I love it.
Christine Alf Rippey, what do you love most about LeGrand and what do you think LeGrand does well? You've got one minute.
I, I love the people and the community. It's the best place to raise the family. We can bike, we can walk, my kids can explore independently, safely. And it's just such a nice small-town feel. I love that I can, while I'm at the farmer's market, someone will come up to me and say, you might want to talk to Gladys about her bicycle city in the street. It makes me feel connected and I think all people feel connected to this town. Thank you.
Much, good points. David Moyel, what do you love most about LeGrand and what do you think LeGrand does well? You've got one minute.
All right, well, I get to play a poet here a little bit, I think. LeGrand has it all. It's a great community, great people, great history and a great future. Things I especially love about LeGrand. The way the seasons change, the way our activities change to match the seasons, mushrooming time, huckleberry-ing time, backpacking time, firewood cutting time, hunting time, skiing time. The stunning beauty that surrounds us and the way the views change with the weather and the time of day. The old houses and the stories they tell. Our people and how grounded they are in this place, both figuratively and literally. The way that folks give and share and support. I've never once been stopped on the edge of a road without every rig going by, asking if I'm okay, if I need help. My neighbor gives me pickled asparagus for no particular reason. And on and on. Thank you.
That was wonderful. Thank you for your poetry. All right, moving on to Corinne. Corinne, what do you love most about LeGrand and what do you think LeGrand does well? You've got one minute.
I do love the beauty of the area and the sense of community is amazing and safety. I have a story of when my son was about eight years old and my husband, I thought, was gonna pick him up and he thought I was gonna pick him up. So it turns out that he was walking home by himself in the winter in the dark from wrestling practice and some man in a truck drove up next to him and said, Keegan, do you want to ride home? And he said, no, I don't get into a truck with strangers. And so this man said, okay, I'll make sure you get home. And so he drove next to my son until he made it all the way home. And I never found out who it was. And it's such a beautiful community. Thank you.
Beautiful story. Thank you, Corinne. Thank you for sharing that. And of course, Mary Ann Meisner, our incumbent, what do you love most about LeGrand and what do you think LeGrand does well? You've got one minute.
Well, I love LeGrand because, as like other people have said, the people. It is the easiest town to get involved in. And I, trust me, I know that because I've been involved in everything, it seems. It's just open to you and people are willing to volunteer. I think that's the part that is, kind of amazes me. I mean, I've been involved with, besides the things I mentioned earlier with, I did Cub Scouts, we did Little League, we did, I did, after I got off the school board, I did 24-hour drug-free relay for a couple of years. And it just amazes me how many people would come out to those events. There's always something going on here. My husband and I have been kind of running the Timber Cruisers Car Show every year. And the businesses who are always open to giving gifts to our clubs so that we can have raffle items. And the people who come here to the car show absolutely praise it. They love the city, they love everything about it. And it's talking about nature. We even have elk in our yard now, which we never had before this year.
Love it. Absolutely true. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you guys for, just that feel-good question, yeah. And again, Max and Priscilla, Matt, Matt Cooper, we see your comments on Facebook. We really appreciate that. And again, thank you for those questions that you're submitting. And then also, again, if you want to submit a question via email, it's office@eoalive.tv. All right, so we're gonna move on to the second set of questions. There are three questions that each candidate received ahead of time. However, they do not know which question they are going to answer tonight. For the sake of time, we've grouped the candidates randomly to answer one question per group. They each have two minutes to respond. So the first question is, talk about how LeGrand can improve economic development, which is a hot topic for any town, and what role does the Urban Renewal Program play? And this first, the group that's going to answer this question is Nicole Howard, Kristin Alf Rippey and Mary Ann Meisner. So again, Nicole Howard, you're first and the question again is, talk about how LeGrand can improve economic development and the role that the Urban Renewal Program plays in that.
Okay. Thanks for the question, Brent. So I think there are a few things that LeGrand needs to do and I would narrow this question down to something I talked about in my opening remarks, which is that during COVID, I think we have an especially important job to do here in terms of helping local businesses transition through this really difficult period. So one thing the city can do for economic development, I think, is continue to put energy into cultivating local homegrown businesses. We've had some success with that, both through urban renewal and outside of urban renewal. Businesses like Heinz Meat are a great example, the recipients of urban renewal dollars. But they're locals, they've put together a great business. We have also leveraged urban renewal dollars to help local businesses expand, which I also like to see. So Direct Music is a good example. You know, they've basically doubled their footprint downtown and they provide an awesome service for people. I think having the Urban Renewal Agency, in my opinion, keep focused on the downtown corridor. So we get new things like Tap That, we see Raul's Taqueria expanding, that's good. I am less in favor of using urban renewal dollars out in the business park. That's a complicated subject, but I prefer to see those dollars spent downtown. And I also think that we need to make sure that the dollars are going to projects that rigorously meet the criteria that the Urban Renewal Agency has put together. And the last thing I would say in terms of economic development is, the council should revive and invigorate the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee, what's called the URAC. And this is just a way of bringing business people and local community members into the conversation about economic development so that they can have a say in what kinds of projects get funded and what's gonna benefit the community the most. Thanks.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Nicole. And so Christine Alf Rippey, again, talk about how LeGrand can improve the economic development and what role the Urban Renewal Program plays in that.
I think I'm gonna echo Nicole in a lot of this, but I think LeGrand can continue to improve their economic development by continuing to support the Urban Renewal District. I have seen a lot of improvements to downtown in the last years and appreciate the work that they've done. The district pays for itself out of property tax dollars and the capital improvements that are made increases the property values and then subsequently increases the tax base. It's win-win. Right now, the Urban Renewal Agency or the members of the city council and Mr. Shrop, our city manager, is the acting manager of this. While I feel that this works, historically, there was a group of citizens and business owners that sat on the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee that helped score and rank those projects. And I think it is so important for citizens and business owners to have a voice in this process. As your councillor, I would work to bring back that advisory committee. I also think that the parameters set by the agency should be followed. The agency has made mistakes in the past, which I attribute to projects being ran through outside the scope of the agency. There should be no special deals. Careful consideration must be given to each project and keeping the focus in downtown should be a priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mary Ann Meisner, one more time, talk about how LeGrand can improve the economic development and what role does the Urban Renewal Program play in that.
Okay, thank you, Brent, for the question. In order to improve the economic development, I believe LeGrand must offer to current and potential employers educated workers, affordable housing at all levels, shopping availability, recreational opportunities and a safe environment. The first answers, the first answer a lot of people will give us is say recruit new businesses, which is true. However, we can also obtain these results by supporting our local businesses and helping them grow and stabilize. We need to encourage our students to become educated in a variety of areas. We are unique in the situation by having access to Eastern Oregon University. But this doesn't address all the needs for our youth. Because don't, we can't forget the trade schools. Not all people are geared for college. Someone becomes plumbers, electricians and auto mechanics, working in the health department or the health industry are all valuable occupations which provide a family wage. My opinion on the effectiveness of the Urban Renewal Funds is very high. The agency started in 1999 as a, and the district boundary was established. The intent of the program was to cure and prevent conditions of blight and to improve physical, economical and social conditions within the district. The agency was formed by an ordinance by the city council and that was before I was on the council. However, I was a member of the first URAC Commission. The goals and objectives of the agency are to revitalize downtown, create high-quality wage jobs, develop retail, housing, transportation and community facilities. By using UR funds, many businesses have been expanded, relocated or opened. At first, the funds were used to purchase land and develop the business park, the Big H Project and the Streetscape. So those are just to name a few. You know, you can look at what the IOF building, which is now Tap That. And you can see the things, the quality of the programs that have benefited from this. Urban renewal funds have a public investment of a lot of money, of three, over $3 million from the city. However, we have estimated...
Thank you, Mary Ann. Oh, man. I wish we had more time. It's getting really good. Please forgive us, candidates. And again, we want to thank you for participating. Forgive us if you are cut off. It is painful for us to do that. Your answers are very, very good. Okay, as we move into the second question, this one is one of those hot-button questions. And we did experience and see this firsthand as this topic was approached here recently or a little bit ago. The second question is...
Yeah, one thing real quick.
Yes.
And that is that, so I know that the candidates, like I said, so this, the first question, we have five more that only groups of three candidates are gonna be able to answer. And again, we really hope that the other candidates, that all of the candidates will submit all of their answers.
Correct.
So that we can post them on the web so then, so then the public can get a feel of how everybody feels about all six of these questions.
Absolutely, all the candidates. And that's very well stated, too. Okay, so the next question, again, a little hot-button question. The second question is, should LeGrand have dispensaries for recreational marijuana in the city limits? And then really, why or why not? Now, the next three will have two minutes to respond and this question will be answered by David Glabey, David Moyel and Corinne Dudo. So, David, let's start with you. Should LeGrand have dispensaries for recreational marijuana in the city limits? Why or why not?
I'm glad you asked me this question and I've been very public in my feelings on this. First of all, proponents of marijuana, they love to perpetuate the falsehoods that marijuana use is benign and it's non-addictive. But we're gonna talk about some medical facts. Known side effects of marijuana include an altered state of consciousness, which results in impaired judgment, we've got poor comprehension, delayed reaction time and reduced coordination. Maybe that's why a person is more than twice as likely to cause a traffic fatality if they're using marijuana. Marijuana causes psychosis in some users. We're talking about things like schizophrenia, paranoia, depression, anxiety. Some of those can be lasting with continued use. And marijuana most certainly causes dependency or addiction in approximately 10% to 20% of its users, with the highest rates of addiction being in those who are younger. The only, the sole reason that someone would be using recreational marijuana is for its psychogenic properties or to get high. Medical marijuana is used to offset some sort of a medical ailment where the benefits exceed the risks. But with recreational marijuana, the sole use is to get high. So the question really becomes, do we think that our community needs more citizens who are high on drugs? Do we think that marijuana really helps people become better parents or more successful in their jobs or more productive citizens? Do we think that more of our community members, that we need more community members with impaired judgment or driving on our streets with reduced reaction time and coordination? Do we honestly believe that we need more drug addiction in our community? Because that is what we would be promoting as a city if we increase access to recreational marijuana. And the cost of treating marijuana addiction is steep. I'm happy to share the math with anyone who's interested, but the economic cost of addiction treatment alone would more than offset the highest estimated tax revenue to our community. Marijuana doesn't make sense from a medical perspective or a health perspective or a safety perspective, from a community or an ethical perspective or from a financial perspective. And on that basis, as someone who's dedicated my professional career to improving health and wellbeing of our community, I will firmly oppose efforts to increase recreational marijuana use or access here in LeGrand.
David, thank you. Thank you for your thoughts. Let's go to David Moyel next. David, should LeGrand have dispensaries for recreational marijuana in the city limits? Why or why not? Please take it away.
Well, I really appreciate David Glabey's opinions. We could spend all day, all week debating the pros and cons of marijuana usage. I think that the medical use of marijuana is fairly well-established, it's fairly well-accepted. There's been multiple studies that have looked at impairment, addiction and so on, and they come down on both sides. I will say, from a personal experience point of view, I spent 25 years in the emergency room. I did not see one bad marijuana overdose outcome, not one. So, I don't know. Personally, I believe that LeGrand should be participating in activities related to the marijuana... the marijuana industry. Cultivation, processing, and sales, all mean jobs. And benefiting from the income streams derived from that industry should be on the minds of incumbent and incoming potential city council people. In 2017, the city turned down this income stream when it reversed its initial resolution to put recreational sales on the ballot. Well, I ran an initiative campaign to do it myself. Unfortunately, the amount of time between the council's reversal and the due date for petition signatures just wasn't enough, and I failed to place the measure on the ballot. At that time, I estimated that the city was losing about $60,000 a year. Well, in hindsight, I woefully underestimated the income potential. Pendleton netted $130,000 in the first six months alone of 2018. This is from the Eastern Oregonian. I still believe that citizens-led initiatives to put the question of recreational sales on the ballot is the way forward. I think the issue is too divisive for city council to deal with. The people will eventually decide this matter for us, and they should. Thank you.
David, thank you for your, your thoughts. Okay, let's go to Corinne Dudo. Corinne, should the city of La Grande have dispensaries for recreational marijuana in the city limits? Why or why not? Take it away.
So I am fully in support of medical marijuana. It can be very effective pharmacologic for many diseases that I've seen to make a positive impact on quality of life for some of my patients as a physical therapist. I personally voted no on the statewide ballot measure which legalized marijuana, recreational marijuana in the state of Oregon. Uh, we on the council spent a great deal of time researching, listening, and debating whether La Grande should have growing manufacturing and dispensaries in La Grande. By law, if you accept one of the pieces of the industry, you accept all three. The city can tax sales if it's allowed, but gets no additional revenue for police to deal with law enforcement issues related to marijuana if it is legalized in the city. I spoke with many different individuals on this topic. Um, I spoke with our law enforcement and discussed what impacts legalization has had on Colorado and Washington and what resources they were using to deal with marijuana issues um, at the time. I spoke with teenagers who told me it didn't really matter if it was legal or not. They could get it any, any way they wanted to. Um, I spoke with people whose children were addicted to narcotics, which is tragic. Um, and marijuana is a known gateway drug. I spoke with grannies who drove to Pendleton to get marijuana medicines. Um, in the end, the overwhelming public comments on my email and at the council meetings helped me decide to vote no on growing manufacturing and the dispensaries. Recreational marijuana would create such a change in the landscape and the quality of life of La Grande that I recommend that if anyone wants it, um, that within the city limits, they would need to petition and put it up for a vote of the citizens. I do not think this is an issue that should be decided by just seven of our citizens on the council, um, even if they are our elected representatives. Thanks.
Thank you, Corinne. And we're going to go into, uh, thank you for those answers. We are going to go straight into our third question. You ready?
So, our third question, and this is kind of a hot-button question, too, but it is, we heard from the citizens that this is something that you're, you're kind of wanting to hear about. And that is, given your knowledge, and this is a, the question is directed at you as city council members or you as future city council members, um, is, and the question is this, given your knowledge of La Grande, uh, can you ever imagine a time that, uh, you, can you ever imagine a time as a La Grande city council member where you would vote to limit the authority of law enforcement?
Let's do that question again.
Yeah, let me read that again. Okay. Uh, uh, can you ever remember a time, I'm sorry, the question is, yeah, go ahead.
Given your knowledge of La Grande, can you ever imagine a time as a La Grande city council member where you would vote to limit the authority of law enforcement? You have two minutes to answer that question.
Yeah, and the, and, uh, the order of the people that are going to answer this question in the group is Steve Clements, Denise Wheeler, and Alex McAdad. Now, one little caveat here, and that is, is that, um, the, the, uh, the way our structure of the city is, the city council does not have direct
Correct.
...control
Correct.
of like law enforcement.
Correct.
That is not, yeah. So it's a little more complicated than, so this is a little bit of a theoretical question. So, uh, Steve Clements, you're up first. Uh, thank you for being with us tonight and working on this question with us.
So, um, simple answer is no. What I know about La Grande, 30 years, uh, living here, I can, I, I cannot remember a time when, um, we would ever need to reduce law enforcement, where we had any kind of incidences or situations in the community that warranted looking at, uh, what our police department is doing. If anything, um, I think that there would come a time when we needed to increase the amount of police coverage and service that we have. Um, the last, uh, back in the early 90s, uh, right after I was, uh, first on the council, um, we had ballot measures five and 49, which significantly reduced, um, uh, revenues to the community. And, and it was during that time that we had to reduce, uh, city expenditures across, across the board. And I believe we lost, uh, at least one, maybe two police positions at that time. We live and we're fortunate to live in a very safe community. Um, I have imminent trust and faith in our chief police, chief of police, Gary Bell, and every officer that works for this community. Um, I support them. I'm behind them 100%. Um, I can't, I can't tell you, um, that I have even, I can even imagine, um, the need to reduce, uh, law enforcement authority. I think this is stemming from the, the, uh, the riots that occurred in Portland, which should never have happened. And I honestly cannot imagine what the mayor, uh, and police commissioner of Portland even are thinking about. But we would never, I would never do that here, uh, in La Grande.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Denise Wheeler, uh, do you need me to reread that question to you, or do you got it?
I've, I've got it.
Okay.
Okay, I, I think the reason why people are asking is because of what's happening around um, in different cities. Um, I can't imagine, just like Steve, any circumstances, I mean, any circumstances whatsoever that would, would ever want to limit our police for carrying out their duty and their job in our community. I think the only reason, um, why is because of Black Lives Matters, um, because they're calling, not for this limiting the police, but defunding the, uh, police nationwide. And I mean, everybody, um, the whole nation was appalled about what happened to George Floyd. And, um, besides that, you know, Black Lives Matters still wanted to defund the police. And what happened was horrendous, and, and, and I agree with that. Um, I think Black Lives Matters, just going with that organization, I think is a great thought, um, and everything, but I believe in the Declaration of Independence where all lives matter and not just, um, um, you know, blacks, as they say. Also, I, I can't go along with that organization because it's a Marxist, um, organization, and they teach Marxist ideas. And also, it calls for, um, the dismantling of the Western nuclear family. This is what La Grande is all about, is about families. And so I can't go along with that. And, um, um, and I'm just, I know that we had a protest, and I know I'm going to run a time on June 2nd, and during the time of the protests and early in the morning, there was graffiti left by the supporters of Black Lives Matters. And I'm just glad that the police were there so things didn't get too out of hand because it only takes a second. And I think that's one reason, too, what we've got to let our police do what they need. They are on-site and protecting us, and we need to have police so we can go about our lives without fear.
Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
So, uh, the third person responding to this is Alex McAdad. Uh, Alex, do you need me to reread that question for you?
Oh, no, I got it loud and clear. Thank you, Brent.
Okay.
All right, uh, well, first off, I want to say I am very proud of the work that our local law enforcement does. I've had friends and family serving in law enforcement, and I appreciate everything they do, uh, when, uh, they're wearing the badge and when they aren't. Uh, that being said, there is a committee in Salem right now in the legislature that is looking at, uh, changes to the way police operate in the state of Oregon. So if I get elected, one of the first calls I'll make will be to Chief Bell and, uh, to the leaders of the state's policeman union and start, uh, meeting with them to talk about any concerns they have about the legislation that's being proposed in Salem. Uh, once I get a feel for whether or not they think it's going to impact their ability to keep the community safe, the next thing I'll do is start contacting all the people that I know in Salem, legislators and staffers, and going, hey, I want to talk to you about, uh, the concerns that our police officers have, uh, and hope that we can work with other cities, too, to make sure that, uh, if something's going to negatively impact the ability of law enforcement to keep us safe, um, we're able to fight that over in Salem. Uh, the only way that, uh, the police's current authority is going to be limited, uh, in the city council, uh, is if the state tells us to. Uh, so that's only going to happen if, uh, the state tells us to do something we don't want to do and we don't fight back. So, uh, what I will do, again, is, uh, if there is a mandate to limit the authority of the police, it's going to come from the state, and it's only going to come if we don't do something about it. So that's where I stand on that issue. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you very much. Uh, candidates, thank you for your thoughtful and mindful answers. We sincerely appreciate your candidness, and I think, uh, our viewers, you who are watching this broadcast right now, can really pick out and see some of the themes, uh, that those questions came from, our local community, and the answers that were given. Um, so here's what we're going to do. We're going to come back, and we're going to, we're taking a quick break right now. We're going to come back, though, with the questions we've received, um, through our Facebook page and through our online forum. So please stay tuned, and we'll be right back with some pretty powerful questions, as we were looking at them a second ago. Be right back.
When we think about comfort food, the first thing that comes to mind is the South. Well, in La Grande, that's not the case anymore. Brother Bear Cafe is all about comfort, and they're all about food. They are locally owned, they use local products like Heinz meat, the farmer's market, and locally roasted coffee. They have plenty of room, couches, games, and they have the best staff. They have a rotating breakfast menu and a killer lunch menu. Did I mention that all the specialty baking is done in-house? One last thing, if you bring in an adventure picture for the adventure wall, you get a drink on the house. Brother Bear Cafe, 1,009 Adams in La Grande, right across from City Hall. Give it a try. You won't regret it.
Correct. Yeah. Or do you want to, let's do this. I have them later. Welcome back. Hey, and let's dive into the Facebook questions. Now, there will be three questions, and three groups of candidates will answer one of the questions. And we're going to change this. We're getting close on time, so we're going to change this to a minute and a half per question. And now, uh, none of the candidates know any of these questions.
No, we didn't know these questions. We're just trying to figure it out.
Yeah.
So should we tear into the first one?
Yep.
Okay, and candidates, thank you again for being willing to be put on the spot like this.
Yeah, and just, and the three that are going to answer this is Corinne Dudo.
Corinne.
Corinne, sorry.
Nicole Howard and Alex McAdad.
Okay.
Okay, um, in the spirit of this question, uh, there's a lot here, but let me just put it to you this way. Um, this person wants to know, in your opinion, what can be done to help the downtown area to stay vibrant and full and, and moving forward? And I think that really, would you agree that's the question there?
Yep.
So again, the question really has to do with, what, what are your thoughts around keeping the downtown vibrant and moving forward? And so we're going to start with Corinne. What do you think?
What can keep the downtown vibrant? I think that, um, we have done some good work with urban renewal dollars on, um, revitalizing downtown, in particular of, um, uh, modernization or, uh, renewing the, um, the buildings. What we're looking at now is maybe doing some targeted, finding some blight and taking some urban renewal dollars and helping the owners of those buildings to, um, bring them up to where they can actually house, uh, businesses. Um, I think having a variety of businesses downtown is, is useful, and, um, you go into one business and then, um, you'll be attracted to another business. Um, managing our parking is also essential so that people are free to find a parking space downtown and be able to walk to the businesses. The walkability of this community is, is just fabulous. Um, so I think continuing to pay attention to our downtown and to support our downtown businesses is what we need to be doing. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Corinne. Okay, so now let's go to Nicole. Nicole, uh, the question really, in the spirit of this question, was what can be done to keep the downtown vibrant and moving forward? Go ahead.
Great, thanks. Um, a couple of things just jumped to mind. One is continuing to develop the city's relationship with the farmer's market. Um, we met with the farmer's market board not too long ago, um, during this market season. And as, even in COVID, it's continued, but as that market continues to grow and serve a much larger population, I think that this, the area around Mac Square is going to become sort of, um, a hub at least two days a week when that market's going. So, most successful downtowns have a really vibrant, um, and locally sourced farmer's market. Um, the second thing I do is consider clothing, uh, closing the streets sometimes. Um, a lot of communities do this where they'll take a block, and La Grande's done this before, um, particularly in the times of COVID, um, when you're having to serve people outside. This gets more challenging in winter months, of course, but finding ways to block off sections of street or maybe think more creatively about sections of alleyways and using those for common spaces for multiple businesses, I think is a really interesting idea. And we've dabbled in it. I think we could develop it a lot more. If anyone's been to Walla Walla recently, you know, they've done some pretty cool stuff along those paths. And the last thing is I'd make it accessible. Parking is sometimes an issue. People complain about not being able to park downtown. If you work downtown, it can be really difficult to find a parking space. And I'd work on some bike racks. I have a bike.
Fantastic. As a cyclist, thank you for that. All right, last, uh, Alex McAdad, um, the thoughts around, um, helping make sure and ensure that downtown is vibrant and moving forward?
Well, thank you for the question. There are a few things that I think cause, uh, a lot of vacancies downtown. Um, some of our things that are out of our control, Amazon is the way that people shop now, and JCPenney's really couldn't compete with that. So we don't have a JCPenney's downtown anymore. It's really sad. Uh, the other thing is that ever since I've been in La Grande, everybody is, who's in business I've talked to have said that the city has a lot of barriers to commerce, make it really difficult to actually get anything done. You know, Urban Renewal Agency gives out a lot of money to businesses, but then they have red tape that, um, you know, businesses turn around with that money and realize they can't do as much as they thought. Um, one of the things that, uh, you know, came up over the summer was that the bowling alley downtown, uh, ended up, uh, having their opening delayed again, uh, this time because somebody told them they used the wrong window trim. And when they said they wanted to appeal this decision made by the Landmarks Commission, uh, they were told that they couldn't appeal that to the city council. And I'm really not comfortable with the fact that we have an unelected panel preventing us from having a job creating an economy-growing bowling alley. Um, one of the things that I would do to address, uh, commerce downtown, make it easier for businesses to work, I would, uh, ask the council to convene a business advisory committee. I would ask the council to convene a business advisory commission, getting representatives of the business and labor community at the table. Spend hopefully about six to eight months listening to business owners and employees talk about what makes it difficult to do business in LeGrand. Present the council with the list of municipal regulations that get in the way and then just ax them all. We'd also look at state and federal problems that get in the way. Thank you.
Question we received online or through the email. So go right ahead.
And again, there's, there's a ton of comments, candidates, there's a ton of comments and questions and they're generally written for all of the candidates. And I know that the folks that are watching would love to hear you respond to those. Okay, so this is the second question that's been submitted. And again, the people that are going to respond to this are Steve Clements, Denise Wheeler, and David Moyel. What need for LeGrand, what need for LeGrand has the current COVID situation highlighted? And what would you do to address it? So what, the need that's in LeGrand that has come to light because of COVID? What is it and how do you think we can address those things?
Wow, that's, that's a huge one. And I'm going to start with the fact that the city had some money, $300,000, $350,000 that it had set aside specifically to help business. We have another $750,000 that I've asked for us to begin considering how we might be able to use that to give to businesses later on. Here's what I've learned. One, many businesses don't have the financial records and accounting process that allows them very to apply for state and federal grants. We need to help them put those type of records together. Two, businesses rely on their summer and fall and spring for most of their business revenue. Come winter, which we haven't been in COVID during the winter yet, that's where things get really hard. So we need to be staged now so that when winter comes and businesses really start to struggle, that we'll have, we have a chance to jump in. I want to lower, I want the city to lower its barriers or its requirements for using that $750,000 that we have, that we can work with businesses a little bit more directly. If they don't have or don't maintain financial or accounting records, but they keep cash-based records, we need to give them the tools to do what they need to do and the money to do it with.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Denise Wheeler, did you catch that question or do you need me to get it?
You know, say it again, just in case.
So, so during the COVID situation, what needs have come to light in the city of LeGrand? And how can we meet those needs?
Okay, I agree with Steve. That is kind of a difficult question because there's so many different needs, so many different things that are happening. I just recently talked to one of the workers from the Hobby Habit and they did not close down. And I think what happened is there was so much information that was coming out, what was essential, what was not essential. And I think if, and they went through all that paperwork and they found out if they did certain things, they became essential. So they didn't have to close down for weeks and weeks like everybody else did. And there are certain protocols. I know that's exactly what we do at Grand Ron Retirement. There is, we use PPIs when we have to. We disinfect all services. We wear masks. All the residents wear masks. We get tested every two weeks, employees, and then they get tested about every month or so. I think a lot of businesses closed when they didn't have to. One thing my husband and I always did, we really went and got takeout. Maybe that's why I gained the 20 pounds that I gained. But it's been, I think what we need to do is help to our businesses to realize they can open up and do it safely because we need to open up. Our economy really needs to soar again.
Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
And David Moyel, do you, do you need me to rephrase that question or do you got it?
I think you get the question. That's good. So from a medical and public health point of view, I believe the response to COVID on the part of the city and the county has been extremely positive. The way that information has been made available to the general public through various channels is a credit to the city and county. We can look at the effects of COVID on business climates. And the city's initial response, I think it was about $170,000, went out to a number of businesses in town, is also creditable. It was swift, it was decisive, and it was readily available. There wasn't a lot of red tape. These businesses were able to get their hands on critical dollars when they needed them, not in the future. One thing that's going to be really key going forward is what's going to happen to renters in this town when the current regime of rental eviction and rent increase limitations comes to a close. I'm a landlord here. I do home renovations. I take old houses and renovate them and put them on the rental market very early on. One of my tenants called me and said, Dave, what's going to happen if I can't make rent? I said, well, we'll lower the rent until you can make it. So this is going to be an issue that perhaps city council can have a policy input on going forward. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your words of wisdom there, all of you. And that's, that is one of those questions, Brent, that who could have foreseen this coming? How do you know how to react? So thank you. Those are very insightful. Hey, let's move on to the third question, which is our third and final group. And then we're going to get into the closing statements here in just a second. This one is an interesting question. I think we would all agree. There is a perception of homelessness increasing in LeGrand, in the city of LeGrand. Now, I don't have any numbers or statistics. We don't have that. But the perception is that that homelessness issue is rising. So the question is, how do you plan to address that? And so let's start with Christine.
I'd give them all three of the people that are, yeah.
What's that?
Give up.
Oh, so sorry. It's Christine, Mary Ann, and David Gleb. I apologize. You three are on deck next. And so let's start with Christine.
Wow, this is a tough question. I think all of us have seen people around town. And it's hard to, I mean, part of it's a lack of housing. And we look at the veterans' tiny homes being built. I think that's over on 16th Street. And hopefully that can alleviate stuff. The warming station will hopefully be able to alleviate some of the homelessness problems that hopefully is getting all their permits approved. Man, my heart hurts for these people. And I think, I think we just need to work as a community and support them and support funding where we can. And, and I've seen our community outreach with food and clothes and for fire victims across the state. And we really need to make sure our citizens in our town get that same support. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Mary Ann, again, the perception that homelessness is rising in the city of LeGrand. And that is perception, but the question is, what do you believe you could do about that?
Thank you, Bob. That is a tough question. And I do agree with Kristen, Christine, I'm sorry, that there is a lot, that's a really tough issue. But I do know that we do have the warming station that should be opening in November, I believe. And which doesn't answer all the questions because we know that there is a real issue here. But I do know with the housing study that's coming up that we are working, the city is working on, hopefully we will try to address some of the needs for the low-end housing that we have. And then I do know that I'm on the Northeast Oregon Housing Authority Board of Directors and they're planning on building 100, I think it's 125 unit apartments out on East Q. But that, and that shouldn't, but that should get started like in the spring. So that might address some of the issues because I know we have a real issue with housing here. We need housing of all levels, you know, for affordable housing for up to the higher-end housing. Because all of those, there is a shortage. And then I also think that we need to address, if we can, our work with CHD on addressing mental health issues. I think a lot of the people who are homeless have mental health issues that aren't being addressed. And all of this, it's not all under the city. I know we can't do it all, but we can certainly give our opinion and help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. David, you're next. What are your thoughts about the perception of the growing homelessness problem? And how would you plan to address that?
So, so first of all, Bob, you know, the way in which we care for the poorest and most vulnerable in our community is a direct reflection of the values that we have as citizens of LeGrand. And so this is a real issue. And again, you know, I mentioned the 20%, over 20% poverty rate that we have here in our town. That is one of the primary reasons that I decided to run for city council is that, you know, I believe that as a small business owner, I've got some ideas on spurring economic growth. This comes right back to the economy. It comes back to the shortage of available housing that has been a common theme here tonight. These are real facts that we've got to address. They're hard questions to answer. You know, these, it's going to take multifaceted solutions to that problem. But I think we need, we need big ideas and we need new ideas in town to address this. We need to, we need to work cooperatively with charitable organizations in our community, with churches and other organizations to help to care for those who are vulnerable amongst us. We need to be able to, you know, create within our city a vibrant economy to make sure that people can get jobs. I've talked to three developers here in town who talk about, you know, horrendous regulatory burdens that keep them from developing new housing here. I spoke with one last week. I said, why aren't we building new housing? They said, I'd love to. They said, you know, there's too many regulations in our way. And if we could clear some of those, we'd be able to do this. So I, I think there are some answers to be found and, and I want to be a part of that solution as a, as a member of the city council.
David, thank you. And thank you all for those answers. And I just really have to point out, Brent, that you who are at home watching this, I think you would see what we have seen and what we've experienced is that we've got some high-quality, highly qualified people who are vying for the city council and the mayor position. And it is truly humbling and an honor to hear some of these high-powered answers. Brent, what is your take so far in what you're seeing tonight?
Well, I agree. I mean, in, in past city elections, we've had, you know, several positions that were uncontested. And so, I mean, I think this is really good for the community. I mean, there have been times, it's been a little drama-filled in the last few months and stuff. But, but still out of, I'm a big believer then in, out of people having to find some kind of an agreement, forced to find some kind of an agreement sometime, that really good decisions come about.
I agree. Absolutely.
So I just, I really appreciate you guys taking the time to do this. And we're, we're getting close to the end. We're, let's.
We are. Yeah, we are. And so we're going to get right to that. If you, if you have noticed, we have not taken many commercial breaks. There was a conversation that said, we just need to get to this. We need to get these, these excellent people into the viewership so that people can understand, they can see, and again, they can make that informed decision based on what they have heard and seen today, as well as diving a little deeper and asking good questions with our online systems. So let's do this. We're going to get right into the closing statements. And before we do that, very quickly, thank you, candidates, for putting up with this. It is a lot. And I think we've asked a lot of you tonight. It is an honor and it is a privilege to stand here with you this evening as we have talked about some, some pretty hard-hitting, serious issues that our city council faces and has faced in the past and will face in the future. But take, take heart, those of you who are watching, as you can see, we have some excellent people who are vying for these positions. Okay, so with that said, let's get into the closing statement. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes. Unfortunately, that is not much time to get your message out there, but one and a half minutes. And we are going to start in the reverse order that we did for the opening statements. So again, each candidate will have one and a half minutes and to really tell us in their own words why you as viewers and why we as citizens of LeGrand in this area should choose them to be on city council or our mayor. And so first, do you want to start our first one?
Yeah, so Christine Alf Rippey, thank you for joining us. Help the, help the voters know why they should vote for you.
Well, LeGrand's businesses and families have a hard road navigating through this time of COVID and beyond. As a city councilwoman, I would work for you. I have no special interests, no friends with agendas and deep pockets pushing me towards election. I am a mom. I am your neighbor, wanting and willing to donate my time to helping LeGrand thrive. If elected, I promise you, I will stay informed and stay connected. I will look for innovative solutions that have worked in other rural areas. I will engage with stakeholders across all sections and listen to experts. Please vote for me when you get your ballots these next couple of days. Christine Alf Rippey, LeGrand City Council, position four. Thank you.
Kareem, our incumbent.
We ready?
There you go.
We're ready.
Okay, I have a 10-year vision for LeGrand. So this is my vision. I'd like to see increased housing in the low and middle price ranges so that we have affordable housing for a workforce and current and future. 100% compliance with ADA curb cuts within the city limits so that everyone has access to our sidewalks and our homes and our stores and our schools. Increase library hours and services, perhaps a library district that serves the entire county. Increase pool hours and programming for the community. An all-weather path around Pioneer Park, completion of the path from Riverside Park to Island City. Growth of current businesses with the help from the urban renewal dollars. Like to recruit new businesses, including manufacturing, exporting out of the county and internet sales. Programs linking the school district and EOU to the city. Encouraging careers in understaffed areas such as our police, fire EMS, police officers, EMT, paramedics, those sorts of things. I really hope to shuttle LeGrand toward these visions. And if you agree with me, vote for Kareem Dudo.
Thank you, Kareem.
All right, Steve Clements, please give us your opening statement or closing, sorry, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you. You know, a candidate's personal values are important to voters' choices. The personal characteristics that I value and live by include integrity, honesty, respect, kindness, compassion, and empathy. I live a life of integrity because I learned a long time ago that the pain of doing wrong hurts more than the joy and pleasure of doing good. I believe I know people. I listen and I care about what people think and feel. I am a natural doer and I want to help whenever possible. I find people respond positively when treated with kindness and respect. And these are the personal traits I used during the public hearing on the warming shelter last December. And these are the same traits that I will continue to use as your mayor. I've addressed some of my goals this evening. And whether it is housing that helps our economy or improving our local quality life, I promise that I will make sure that the people, that you, the voters of LeGrand, are first and foremost in my mind when I make my decisions. I'm into reading biographies this last two years. And right now I'm reading a biography of John Adams. Shortly after John Adams was elected the second president of the United States, the Philadelphia paper wrote this about him, that possessing great integrity, he would not sacrifice his country's interests at the shrine of a party. Not John Adams. I've got no presidential inclinations, but you can rest assured, I'll do the very best for this community. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Steve. Excellent book too. Thank you. All right, next, David. David Gleb, give us your closing statement, please.
You know, voters here in LeGrand have some really hard choices to make. And you can see, you can see the character and, and the integrity and the experience of the people that we, we have here. And I think you can, you can all get a sense for how passionate we all are about wanting to serve our community. You know, most of us have been involved for years and years in volunteering and helping to care for people here. You know, I just, I feel like, I don't think you can make a bad choice. But I hope that, that you as voters will choose the person that inspires you the most or that you feel will represent you the best. represent you the best. And, you know, I hope that we all, as members of the community of La Grande, can help to, you know, be inspired to serve more in our community. I want to work with, you know, people who cares deeply about the people here and the city, you know, as I do. You know, and I, platform that I'm running on, four of us have in common. I won't go into details about this here because it's widely published on our, on our pages. But, you know, I just, I promise that if elected, that I will do everything within our power to make our families stronger, to make our businesses prosper more, and to keep our future as La Grande community ever brighter.
So we've got Alex McCanadad next for your closing statement.
Hang, stand by, just one second. There you go.
There you go. Sorry, Alex.
Well, thanks, Brent, Bob, and the rest of the EO Live TV team. One of the worst parts about running for office this year, instead of covering it, is that I'm not behind the scenes with you guys. But it's best, you know, that I step away and let you be independent. So I really thank you for everything you've done here. One of the things I can add to what I love about La Grande tonight is that in the midst of a really polarized national debate on politics, we had a really civil policy-focused forum. And I appreciate every single one of the candidates for talking about what they stand for rather than, you know, punching each other in the face, because that's one of the things that makes La Grande a really great place to live. Now, the last things I'll push to you, if you want to know anything about me, you can contact me on my website, www.alexfor.us. It has my platform, list of endorsements, links to my campaign finance profile with the Secretary of State. I think transparency should start with something that's personal instead of just being a buzzword that you throw around on the campaign trail. If you want to call me and talk to me, it's 541-805-2630. Best part of the website I can point you to is our Renew La Grande platform that I am supporting along with Dr. Gleb, Denise Wheeler, and John Bozarth. These are a set of 10 ideas we think can renew La Grande and push us into the future. If you want to talk to me or any of us about that, I encourage you to get in contact with us. Please remember to vote. Tell your friends to vote. May the best person win. Thanks, La Grande.
Thank you, Alex. Next, we've got Denise Wheeler for your closing statement. So Denise, take it away.
There I am. First of all, I do want to appreciate this opportunity that we've had to discuss and has brought a lot of tender feelings in my heart about La Grande and the possibilities that we have. And we do have a few issues that we do need to address, obviously, which was mentioned, it was housing, you know, and incentives for our businesses. We need to fill our business park out there. We need to bring, bring them in with incentives. There's so many things that we can do here to, to build and, and let people know how great this community really, really is. I could promise you that I've been blessed with enthusiasm. And if I serve on the council, you will have my enthusiasm. And of course, I have an opening ear. And just like Alex said, you could contact any of us. I have a Facebook page. If you have any questions, I'd like to go into more detail. This is a great community, and it has blessed my life and the lives of my children. And I want to continue to do that for all of our citizens. And I promise that I will do my best, and I think all the candidates have something great to offer.
Thank you, Denise. Nicole Howard, thank you for being with us tonight.
Sure.
Give us your closing statement.
Great deal. I want to say that being able to serve on City Council has been a privilege and it's been a challenge. I've learned a lot about the nuts and bolts of government and a lot about working with people and problem-solving. There's a tremendous amount of tedium in this job. We held an entire work session on sewer improvement fee structures. I've spent hours reading through budgets, and I know more than I ever thought I could about sidewalk improvement. It feels like we make very few giant transformative decisions. Instead, it's 1,000 small decisions, one at a time. But over my term, I've seen how those add up to make the work of city government. We ensure a balanced budget. We put some money away for contingencies, and we keep providing services that the community has come to expect. I'm definitely proud of our bigger decisions, like the quiet zone, our housing study, but I'm just as proud as these little advances that most people don't see and the work we do every week and every month to keep La Grande vital. I really hope that I can do this for another term. I welcome your vote. You can find me on Facebook. No way am I giving you my cell number. Thanks for watching.
Thank you, Nicole. Right on. Okay, next, we've got Mary Ann. And so, Mary Ann, please give us your closing statement.
Thank you, Bob. Sure. You know that I said at the beginning that I really love this community and want the best for our businesses and our residents. I do believe that all of the people that have come tonight, all of our candidates are very, very qualified to do this position. However, it does take a lot of time, and I have the experience behind me and the dedication and the passion to do this position. And I really would like to continue with four more years if possible. And if anyone needed to contact me, I antiquated. I still have a landline. Not too many people do, besides my cell phone, but you're welcome to call me anytime or see me on the street. I love this community because the people are so friendly, and you can talk to them and you can talk to them about many different things, politics, religion, whatever. We have friends of all the different levels of politics or religions, and we love to have conversations about different things. And you can do that here because the people care. They really want to hear what you have to say. And I really enjoy hearing what the people of our community want to say, and I'm very willing to talk to you. And I hope that you will reelect me, and I appreciate it. I don't want to bore you. I know it's late, and I know you want to get off. So thank you very much. Thanks, Bob, and for Brent.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you. And David Moyau, give us your closing statement.
Okay, I get to ring down the curtain. Well, in my experience, city service is mostly a long, slow slog with a pretty steep learning curve that you have to climb to be effective. We need experience to help steer the city through these challenging times. I have that experience. We need candidates who understand city finances to help us meet the inevitable financial challenges we're going to face because of COVID. I have that understanding. We need candidates who have demonstrated their dedication to public service. I've demonstrated my dedication. I have the experience and the maturity to be a good city councillor. I'm hardworking. I make decisions based on facts, not ideology. Look at my endorsements. Please contact me with any questions or concerns. You can find me on Facebook. And vote. Whoever you vote for, please vote. Your voice matters. Thank you.
David, and thank you, all of the candidates here. You're going to have a bunch of little boxes.
It's like the Brady Bunch.
Yeah. And Kristin, yeah, we tried to warn you, but hey, thank you guys so much for jumping in and everything that you've done tonight.
There it is. Pretty much. You know, as we were.
Wait, wait, we're, yeah, but we're in. Take us out.
No, we're part of the family. We're part of the family.
There's someone missing. That's all right.
We're part of the family. So here's, here's what I think in our wrap-up tonight. You, as a viewer, may have noticed that we have people who are, again, highly qualified. At times, you may hear some disagreements, but at the end of the day, when all is said and done, we come together and we come to resolution. And so that said, I want to thank Brent for hosting and being a part of this, an integral part of this. What you did not see was Brent running around earlier today and yesterday, getting this dialed in and ready. The technology behind it is outstanding and overwhelming. And so, Brent, I want to thank you on behalf of the city of La Grande and our county for all that you do to bring these types of things together. And I think you're getting some applause, so thank you, Brent.
Thank you, yeah.
And I know you have some people that you.
Yeah, so and I, I want to thank the crew. There's about seven people other than us. There's, you know, Bennett is running the teleprompter. Sean and Kyle are directing. Do not come to my office until the middle of next week. That's what it'll be before we get things away put back. Tom is out in the conference room. Tanya, my dear wife, I would be lost without her. She's out there sending me emails and messages. And then my daughter Michaela in Portland has been monitoring the Facebook stream and making sure that everyone is polite and cohesive, so.
And Dotzy.
And Dotzy. I said Kyle.
You did.
Yeah, but it's all right.
Wonderful. Well, we are very thankful.
So, and thanks, Eastern Oregon, for tuning in. And just what a great night. We hope that you found it helpful and informative. The goal was to give you insight into your candidates and to give you enough knowledge to make informed decisions. If you have more questions regarding the candidates, reach out to them. Most of them have Facebook pages or, or websites that you might be able to reach them on.
And some gave their phone number.
That's right. And, and if you text me later, I'll send you Nicole's. Just kidding. Anyhow, as you have seen and heard, our candidates care about this great city of La Grande, and I know they'd be happy to visit with you. We have invited, again, the candidates to answer all of the questions, and those that do, we will put that information on our website for those that want to be a part of that. Also, stay tuned for our election night coverage.
Big election night.
Not sure what that's going to be.
It's going to be big.
But.
It's scary.
Thank you for watching tonight. I'm Brent Clapp.
And I'm Bob Kavanaugh.
And thank you to our sponsors for helping us make this evening possible.
Absolutely.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night. I think we're done. I think we're good.
All right. Wow.